And we will call the meeting to order at 6:31. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. And we will welcome everybody to the meeting as a, you know, it held a hybrid meeting. We have actually, the first time the Board of Selectmen has met in the town hall in quite a long time. And hopefully, we're going to start seeing more and more of our meetings in person and hybrid as well. So let's see, the first item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order. We did that. So the next item is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on April 13th, 2021.
I second that.
All in favor? Next item on the agenda, Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone here who has anything they'd like to speak about, bring before the board?
Yes, Jane Samuels, 24 Elm Street. At a flashback. Most of my questions, Angus, you answered, or Jerry Richard did, about this sustainability. And I gather that it was started before COVID, and then COVID kind of interfered somehow. But I just kind of wonder why I didn't see anything about it on the website, or did I miss it?
I don't know why you didn't see anything about it on the website. We can talk to Amy about that. And like I said to you this afternoon, or this morning, this group started over a year ago. We introduced it in February of 2020. Maybe even before that. And then, like I said to you, COVID kind of got in the way of meetings and things like that. But the group has been meeting regularly for a few months now, and has made some great progress. And we can talk about that in a little bit. But why it's not on the website? Can't tell you. That part of this is advertising it. So I think that the group and my office will work together to make sure that we get it more publicity. I mean, as this group moves forward, these are all things that will bring Deep River into the news as far as you can see what's happening in other communities with their sustainability groups. And we'll see what's happening with our group.
Angus, I didn't see it on the list of boards and commissions. And do they have agendas and minutes published before and after the meetings?
That's an interesting question. This is not a board or a commission. This is a committee put together that does not have any decision, any real decision-making capabilities. They get together, they study ways to move forward, and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen that either the Board of Selectmen can decide, or have to go to the town for a decision. No decisions are made by them. They are not it's not a board or a commission. They keep minutes. They are not required to submit those minutes. They're not required to submit an agenda. But they do.
Angus, I do have a comment about that because I headed the Regulations Committee for Planning and Zoning, and they also had no decision-making. They would make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But Amy had me publish an agenda and minutes for every meeting. The meetings definitely have to be open to the public.
Jane, these meetings, they are open to the public, but I want you to understand something very clearly. The Planning and Zoning Commission, the Regulations Committee that you were on, was part of the Planning and Zoning Commission. You were only on that because you were a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a subcommittee of a commission, you are required to submit minutes and agendas. This committee is not some subterfuge so we can sneak things through. This is a committee that works for the benefit of the community.
I'd never thought that, Angus.
Nothing, nobody's trying to sneak anything through. We're simply operating as advised by the Town Council and by the ordinance and the statutes. As the group progresses, they will be making quarterly reports, minimal quarterly reports, to the Board of Selectmen. So at least four times a year, you will hear what they're going under. Hopefully, they will have a link on the website so that you can keep track that way. I don't know if they actually have a regularly scheduled meeting yet. But once they do, that will be on their portion of the website. And that will be something that you can go and pay attention to. If you want to participate, you certainly are welcome to participate. Just let us know. And we can make sure that you're on their mailing list, so you know when their meetings are scheduled, and you can go. It's a very interesting group, and we'll talk about them a little bit more once we move down the agenda.
And I noticed that there are three vacancies, and I understand one of their things that they want to do is has environmental concerns. And I taught environmental science in a private school, and I also studied it in graduate school. And I would like to submit a letter of interest to fill one of those vacancies.
That's awesome, Jane. I'll give Carol your information, and she'll contact you. There are no vacancies. This group can be as large or as small as it wants to be. There are no vacancies.
Oh, that's what it said somewhere. The only place I found on the website. If Carol will contact me, you don't want me to send a letter to you?
No, you don't need to. This is perfect. I'll get through your information.
That would be fine. Angus, I did not think it was that you were trying to sneak something by us. I just didn't know anything about this group. I think last I was in Vieques, which is why I didn't go to a meeting or hear anything about it. And I understand from Jerry that it was also in the Deep River News. So I know it wasn't something that you were keeping secret. I just didn't know about it, and it wasn't on the website.
I'll make sure I just made a note to make sure to connect you with Carol.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your interest. Is there anyone else here that has anything to, any other public comments?
Ronnie?
You gotta unmute, Ron.
Ronnie, maybe you can get Jill. There you go.
There we go. Still nothing.
How about now?
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Ron.
It's been a while, and there's some rumors floating around. And I like, one of the rumors, I would like maybe the Selectmen to address and get it straightened out.
Okay, we're having a hard time hearing you, Ron, so go for it. Speak up.
Okay, is this any better?
A little better. We'll make it work. There you go.
There is interest in the Gary Mislik property where his Quonset hut was over at the gravel pit there. I heard rumors that there's quite a few buyers that are interested in buying that. And the town was going to hire a Realtor to sell that piece of property.
The last time we sold, last time we sold property up there, Ron, we used a Realtor. I've gone to the, the Town Council is now researching how we can sell that. If we just get, if we get a number of offers, we might be able to just accept offers. Really trying to see, make sure we do it properly.
Okay, so if we entertain the idea of letting it go out to bid?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when do you think that will be carved in stone on which way you're going to do that?
Well, I've got to hear back from the attorney. I don't have a deadline. I don't have a schedule on it. I'd like to do it sooner rather than later. I'd love to get that on the tax rolls. It's a matter of just making sure that we do it properly.
Okay.
Ron, if I might, what's your concern?
Well, my concern is why we need a Realtor.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was curious. Yeah, okay. Because a Realtor takes a commission, is what you're saying.
I don't know why, Ron. All I know is that the last time we did, which was prior to my time sitting in this seat, we used a Realtor. And I want to just make sure we do it correctly. That's all. That's what's taking so long to do it.
And Ronnie, just so you know, I've asked Angus this, and I've been a strong opponent asking about that. And we are trying to work the best way for the community here. I don't want to give any money away, no disrespect to a Realtor. Every little dollar will help us with our budgets. So I have been asking Angus, and we've been working together as a Selectman for the best interest of the community on this one. So rest assured that as soon as we figure it out, the decisions will figure it out.
Okay, great, great. That's good. I'm okay with that. Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Anything else?
Angus, sorry, this is Jane Samuels again. You said twice so far, something about a town council? Do we have a town council?
That's our town attorney, Jane.
Oh. Oh, you meant, okay. Council, not, right, okay. I understand there are, there's a beaver dam somewhere down on the little river behind my house. And I know we have to go through wetlands, but then I guess the town comes in, hopefully through the gate that I'm going to get rebuilt. But I'm going to know about when you would come in, right?
Any of the beaver dams down behind your house, those are on private property. So the town really doesn't have any authority to come in and do anything to those until they become a threat to public infrastructure. If you or any of your neighbors want to eliminate that beaver, or that group of beavers, then the town will do what we can to help you. We'll sign any papers that we can for you with DEEP. And if need be, we'll bring some equipment in to help you remove the beaver's dam and house. But we don't have any authority to remove that beaver dam, or to remove the beavers. That's all.
I don't even know, my brother is the one that's the businessman. And I don't walk down there, so I haven't introduced myself to the beavers. But I understand that there's some flooding down downstream or upstream.
I'm not sure that a beaver dam can flood downstream unless the beaver dam lets go.
Right. Yeah, it would be upstream. I will leave that to my brother in inland wetlands, then.
Yep. Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is appointments, and the Sustainability Committee is on the list for that. This is a group, as we said earlier when we were speaking with Jane, this is a group that was really initially introduced to the community back in February of 2020. Short, and I want to suggest in March of 2020, we adopted the resolution to start the group. And immediately following that, COVID-19 hit, and it kind of fell by the wayside for a little bit. I want to suggest three or four months ago, five months ago, the group got active again, or really got activated. This group of people that are on the committee have been meeting irregularly, but often, and have got some great items on their agenda that they're already studying, some of which are the food waste, the collection of food waste, and how we can save money and save some environmental impact on the disposal of food waste. There's talk about more electric car chargers around town. And I see that Jerry, that Jerry Richard is here, if he wants to speak a little bit about what the committee is doing. Welcome to do that. But we are working toward.
My microphone is working. Can you hear me?
I can, much better than the last time we were together.
Oh, really? Well, it's a new microphone. Amazing. Well, I think you mentioned the food waste that Lenore's doing. The other thing is pollinator pathways, which is another project that's being addressed. I, along with Jeff Gross and Kevin Clark, who's been helping out on the committee with alternate energy. In fact, I submitted a document to Carol earlier this week. And we'll be talking about that. It's kind of a near-term and long-term blueprint for the town for alternate energy that something we'll discuss. And then obviously would become a topic to discuss with you gentlemen.
Yep. Some of the other, what was one of the other things with dark skies? We were going to look into the dark skies.
Another topic. There's also
What is dark skies?
Dark skies is a way to try to see how we can reduce the amount of light pollution. You know, I can speak to my house. There's a streetlight right across the street. That streetlight lights up my front yard. Makes it very difficult. Last night I was out trying to, with a telescope, trying to look at the moon. It gets in the way of that. It gets in the way of stargazing and things like that. It's just unnatural light that we're going to try to reduce. All those kinds of things make for a nicer
Sounds like a science fiction movie.
But it's a good group. They're going to, if you remember, when we were talking about putting this together, the benefits to the community, there's lots of funds out there that we can utilize for our parks, for other projects around town. And I think that once, now that we're rolling, we're going to start seeing more and more benefit from the group. And it's a really good group of folks that are working. And I'm going to ask, while this is not a mandated thing, and there is no term limit, it's been about a year since we put folks on the committee, and I'd like to reappoint those folks. And we'll introduce Jane to Carol and see if she, you know, once they meet and if she still wants to continue.
Yeah, because certainly there are environmental actions as part of the overall Sustainable Connecticut menu, we say. And so certainly Jane's experience would be excellent.
I think so, too. So just for the sake of moving forward, and if someone would like to nominate these folks for reappointment?
Yeah, I moved that we appoint, and I hope I don't mess up any names here. Carol Jones, Lenore Grunko, Jeffrey Gross, Donna Grant, Jonathan Kastner, Gerald Richard, and Molly. Don't know how to say Molly's last name. Fluckinger? I hope I didn't butcher her last name. I apologize if I have.
Sorry, Molly.
Thank you for serving, but sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. All those in favor?
Angus, I think you could put Kevin Clark's name in there as well. He's a Deep River resident. Because of his work schedule, he hasn't been on the Zoom meetings. But he and I have been in discussion, and also the three of us along with Jeff Gross. So he's been involved in the project.
I know his name has come up in many of our conversations at meetings.
He's got some excellent experience and knowledge for this program.
Can we add Kevin Clark to the appointments?
I may, I'll move that we amend the list to add Kevin Clark to the previous motion, approved motion.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. That's it for our agenda tonight. We can go back to Audience of Citizens for one quick visit, if anyone has anything more to comment on. If not, we will move forward.
I actually need Alex's last name.
Alex. Yeah, Alex in a bit ago. No. I don't know.
If Alex can unmute?
Well, our minutes will just have to reflect that Alex came to our meeting. I think you all have probably seen the streets. Just some quick news. The street sweepers have been out. We're just about wrapping up on that. We'll hit the parks soon with the street sweeping. Docks will be going in. And I think at the end of this week, so we can get the voters a little bit out. But fishing season started early and all that kind of thing, so the weather's breaking. Let's get outside.
We didn't have a COVID thing with Scott. I missed the beginning. How was Deep River doing COVID-wise?
We're doing better now. This has been a good couple of weeks, although we did have sad to announce that we did lose our third citizen to our third resident. A gentleman had an untimely death earlier this week. So that's our third. But we are still seeing a high infection rate amongst the younger population. But Deep River, we've been in single digits the last couple of weeks. And that's leading towards this, having our meetings more in person. Hopefully, we're going to open up the town hall beginning of May for traffic. And we've already been open, but we're going to open up a little more. And then I think May 19th, when the governor opens up everything, we're going to jump right on in that and just be open, doors will be unlocked.
Like I said earlier, I mean, I was a little concerned that the low turnout, number of people, children, younger generation, high school, kids that aren't getting vaccinated, nearly young adults. And it's a little concerning for our community that people don't want to do it. But again, we can't force them, but it's one for the betterment of the community that people get it.
That is an interesting thing. I don't have all of the statistics on it yet. But the 55 and up, we're well into the 70%. But from 55 and down, we're very, very low. And the 16 and up, very, very, very few kids from Deep River are getting vaccinated. And I'm not sure if that's messaging or what that is. So I'm going to work with the schools this week and see if we can increase that messaging, try to get kids out, and try to get people vaccinated. Because that really is how we're going to move into the summer and into the future.
Back to normalcy.
Sorry, we will see some roads. We're going out to bid on our roads, paving. And I think we're going to see some work at the end of Bushy Hill. I don't have that list in front of me. Bushy Hill over at Essex Street a little bit. West, the end of Westbrook Road needs to be finished. I think that Fox Run is scheduled to get done in the fall. That's going to be done. The lane, I can't remember the name of the street off of Rob Kelsey that's going to be done. A couple more roads are on the list, so we'll get as much as we can done on road paving this summer. Trees are, trees are we're still doing the tree work. We still have a lot of dead trees we're taking down. So we're just continuing to make progress. The elementary school, I think we're going to do a section of roof. Another section of roof. Hopefully, we'll do the whole thing if the state funding comes through. If not, we'll just continue to do one section at a time. That's something we're working with sustainability about. If we're able to finish that whole roof, we'll start exploring whether we can put solar for 30 years. And the last thing, probably should have said this in the beginning and in the middle, is to make sure that folks get ready for the closing of the bridge on Route 80, right at the Deep River, right near Deep River Farms. That's scheduled to close on or around June 26th. And will be closed through, for 69 days. And will open up again right before school starts, so get ready for it. I know that Duane is working with the contractors to try to make sure that we can get this open as quickly as we can.
I was at a meeting with them last week over something else. They're planning on working six 10s right now. Six days, we've ten hours a day, and they feel if they finish their job, the time is up.
Good, great. Yep, perfect. They'll just keep pushing until all right, that's it for me.
Excuse me, Angus?
Jerry?
I know the Audience of Citizens is already over, but you just brought up the bridge. Any discussion on how we're going to reroute fire trucks and ambulances and stuff, or not?
Emergency services will be going down Plains Road. The town crew will be up there in a couple of weeks to improve the gravel section of that. That cuts, kind of bisects the farm. I would prefer that traffic, that through traffic, not try to use that road. Because number one, it's not particularly wide. But number two, it's dangerous to come out onto Route 80. That's a dangerous corner and a dangerous hill. So really not advertising that that be used for regular traffic, but emergency services will be able to get through.
No, I understand that wholeheartedly. I just wanted to make sure we out here can be protected. That's all, sir.
Now, we've got, we're going to be I'm not sure about whether they're going to put an ambulance over there or not. They're talking about that now. I'm also not sure. I'm fairly confident we're going to move put a remote police station over there in the existing firehouse. So we'll have a police officer up there as well on a regular basis. So we're preparing to have as much as we can up there for emergency services.
The ambulance, they're prepared to move one of the ambulances out to the town garage or whatever necessary. They prefer to leave the ambulances where they are for personnel and stocking and restocking and all that kind of stuff, that they're prepared if they have to. But they're willing and able to use the Plains Road once it's cleaned up a little bit, so they have no problem with that.
I understand that and appreciate all they do.
I have one more comment, just a question, actually. Jane Samuels, are we going to have the muster this year?
I think so. We're certainly working towards it. We've had a couple of meetings already. We've got another meeting scheduled for May 20th. And given the way things are going, and certainly with all of the recommendations from the federal government and health agencies, it looks as if an outdoor event like that can happen. The big concern really is controlling the crowd inside the muster itself. The parade, I think will be spread out enough. But once we get inside the muster grounds, there is some concern that folks will be a little bit packed in a little too tight. Yep, and we do have a Memorial Day parade coming up. It's much shorter than normal. But we're working towards that as well.
Thank you.
All right, here in other businesses, I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn? All those in favor? All right, everybody. Thank you. Have a great couple of weeks. whether the town is obligated to Whether the town is going, is obligated to, to contribute a percentage to the steep grant. And we are working towards not having to do that. And, and it, we've gotten encouragement from the state that we are okay. The state, we spend the state money first and then time to contribute after. Well, um. That's exactly right. The governor gave, it is. The governor put his, um. His budget forward, and that's what's reflected in our budget. The legislature, I think it came out of committee. Carmella, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no budget yet from the legislature. There's no approved budget. But the, the finance committee has put a budget out that reduces funding to Deep River by a total of about $3,000. Some gets reduced more, some gets reduced less, and we get an increase in something else. But it's a total sum of about $3,000 or $4,000 that we are receiving, less than we received in the, in the governor's budget. More important than that to me is the fact that the governor pushed back a, um, a scaled back ECS funding. Does the state is reducing the monies that are going to certain communities, Deep River amongst those. Um, the governor pushed that, the beginning of that back another two years, but the, uh. Legislature, at this point legislature has, uh, starts that next year. So, um, we will see, we will see in, not in. In, in next year's budget, but in the budget following, we'll, we'll begin to see a scaled back reduction in ECS money from the state. That's going to, that's going to, um, impact Deep River considerably. We get a lot of money from the state for, for our schools. Whatever vehicle's taxes, um, I just was talking about that this morning, and it looks as if that's going to die. It has come out of committee, but it doesn't, I don't think it's going to go in there. At least that's what I've been told. I certainly hope it doesn't. That'll have a big impact on the small towns too. I don't remember. I can look that up and give that to you, but I don't remember. That was, we looked at that a couple of years ago, and it was a substantial amount of money to be for that kind of taxes. And that's, I think that's what we could, that, that's the supplement. Yeah, Robin or, uh. Robin can certainly give us. Yeah, we looked at it a couple of years ago. This was a serious threat, and, uh, we looked up the number, but I can't remember what that was. It was substantial. Yeah, it was substantial. No. No, it, no, we're going to have voting, uh, remote and voting in person. Yep.
The Finance would vote to set a mill rate act. And based on prior conversations I've participated in, I believe that number seems to be leaning at the moment. We have time to change it before the final. We have time to change it for lots of time, but that number would be giving the town indication that we would charge, the current mill rate would be 29.5. And we would call upon our existing surplus and fund about $55,000. That is what I would present to the town as our current anticipation. Does anyone wish me to present it differently?
As part of the discussion before the motion, I would still.
Well, there will be no vote. Oh.
No, we have to vote on it now.
Well, we'd vote on expenditures, I should say. My question to those who are voting on expenditures, I would like to give the town some indication of what our current thinking is on how to fund those expenditures.
Right. So, I mean, we just want to make the motion now. I'll make the motion that we present to the town. The budget for fiscal year 2021, 22 with expenditures in the amount of 19,278, excuse me, $79,589.
Correct.
To be presented at the hearing and meeting as discussed. So that is my motion.
That is the motion. All in favor of sending me here to the second? I need a second. I need a second and discussion. Uh, can I have a second? Delores mentioned.
Second.
We're saying it's this 29.5.
Well, we ain't saying, we're saying here's the expenditures which we take to the town. We will then say, I would like to tell the town, our current thinking is 29.5. We have plenty of time to change it. We have plenty of time. We will listen to the town tomorrow. If the town wishes us to raise expenditures or lower expenditures, we will take that into consideration and we will revisit.
That's cool.
We'll revisit the mill rate at the time before we go to the seventh, the meeting on the seventh.
Well, I'm willing to negotiate it. The town, the town changes things and, and so be it. The town changed things.
You need a second.
I need a second.
We, I seconded it.
Seconded it? Good. And we're having now a discussion, right? Of expenditures, but what we're getting caught up in is, which is fine, is the mill rate, which I. I believe that it's hard to have a discussion on expenditures without having that mill rate involved in it, but, uh, two can be separated.
Aye. If you want to bring the mill rate up, that's up to you. I.
I, it seems to me the town is showing up. Many people tomorrow will show up to know what their potential obligation is to fund these expenditures. And we have an obligation to tell them our current thinking.
But it's not part of the motion.
It's not part of the motion.
It's not part of the motion. Uh, and new rate will it be part of the motion on the 17th?
Correct.
But I think it influences that. So, all right, all in favor of the 19, whatever Delores read, uh, to go to the town meeting tomorrow night, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All again?
John waved his hand and said yes.
No, that was an aye.
That was an aye.
That was an aye.
Thank you.
All right.
voted positive.
And I will indicate that the, the board of finance is leaning towards a reduction of 95 to 95. All right? And just to beat a point way beyond necessary, we are saying to the town, we are not presenting them the balance budget. And, and, and nobody asked me, but I feel this great need to say, I'm going to come to that. But we have time after tomorrow to listen to alternative. This starts our discussion.
Let's, let's hear what the town says. It's their money.
I can only imagine that the town will. I can't, I don't know what the town's going to say, but the balanced budget to me is a bad, it's a bad message. It's a bad budget.
An unbalanced budget.
An unbalanced budget is, an unbalanced budget is a bad message.
Two years in a row?
Yep.
Just to try and hit a point.
So what if there are suggestions to cut, to cut the expenditures from the town?
It's up to you guys.
Which then keeps, would keep your mill rate at whatever the suggested mill rate 295 is, that then, then have a balanced budget.
That's up to this board.
Here's my suggestion. We have spent two months looking at those expenditures. Tell me which ones you now wish to cut.
I'm, I'm not saying me. I'm saying people in the town may say, what are we spending that money on? You know, Mary Smith's new, uh, porch or something with her frivolous example, but somebody may come up with cuts that they think we should be making in the budget. And if they do, that's a big if, but if they do, then as a responsible finance board, we have to reduce your budget.
Well, we have to discuss if that is correct.
And I think Dwayne's point that he made earlier was, you know, was as far as we're kind of going in behind because of the education. Well, you could say it again, maybe for, I just, you're kind of going in behind the eight ball.
We're going to be behind the eight ball.
Right.
We're going to take money out of the general fund this year to balance the budget. We'll just use an arbitrary number, 50,000. And we're getting 160,000 from the excess money from Region Four. That's 210, 220,000 dollars for.
And we're not.
We're behind, behind the eight ball for next year.
We're not going to get that next year.
And that point should be made tomorrow night.
Right.
People should be made aware of that. Hey, wow, we're getting this money back on the board of net. That's great.
That's great.
Wow, that's even in our budget, but it's only this year. It's not coming again next year.
Plus the fire department truck payment, first payment will be due. Plus the police will be adding in the cost of funding, whatever that's going to cost, whether maybe, maybe the funding will be less, maybe we'll get some. Help from the state. I don't know if there's any grants.
On the, on the equipment, that's what we're waiting for.
Hoping.
No, for the police.
Yeah, for, for the equipment, for the.
There might be some funding coming in, but that's not going to be an annual maintenance, which that should be minimal. Maybe it'll be 10,000, but that's still 10,000 added into the budget every year.
Yep.
All right. Tomorrow night, uh, does anyone else have any language they can bring up after tonight's meeting?
Yeah, one.
Go for it.
Don't stop now. Don't stop, bro. Go for it. Don't, don't start now.
I think, I think to Bud's point, um, you know, was it, it was. Five years ago that the budget was defeated and we had to rally to.
It was John Bowers.
It was John Bowers. So it was probably six, five or six years ago.
That's correct, yes.
Um, and we, we had to get together and determine why, what, what was the motivating factor and make the changes. Um, we don't have to do that. We can, we can meet again and again and again to make changes. If you guys think that the taxes are too high and. Um, and you feel the same that I feel, that a balanced budget is an important thing to put forward, then we should get together and start making cuts. Because that's the only way to get to a balanced budget is by making cuts, um, or by raising the mill rate.
But we're hurting, I think if we start making $50,000 worth of cuts. We're hurting the services that the town receives.
Absolutely.
We're hurting the, the services that the town receives. We will be cutting back on. Town hall services, access to the town hall, to the dump, to the library, I mean, to every, something's going to get cut. You know, whether it's tri-town gets cut a little bit, you know, we just take 1% from every budget.
Let's, let's, let's just say that the budget is defeated.
Yeah.
By the, by the citizens. We have to cut 50,000, and that does not affect the mill rate whatsoever. It doesn't affect anybody's taxes whatsoever. You have to cut 50,000 plus in order to affect the mill rate and bring the mill rate down. We couldn't find, and I, I was the bad guy. I argued for cuts last time. We didn't find any. I just want to make that point. None, none were found.
Right.
Unless you start coding services that people aren't going to be happy with.
Right, that's where.
Then again, we don't know if the budget is defeated, why it was defeated.
You have to ask.
We have to ask. And that we have to bring up.
Was it defeated because it was too high or was it defeated because it was too long? We don't know that.
Well, don't you get a sentiment on that when, when people address the budget if in fact they do offer. Suggestions or objections to things, you get a sense of what they're looking at, you know, you're spending too much money here.
Well, that'd be, you know, there'd be, you're avoiding, there's a couple of different ways of voting here. If you're all voting on a piece of paper, then that could be on a piece of paper. But that's not the way we're all voting.
It is. In essence, it is.
It is.
Some will be voting, the people in person will be voting on a piece of paper.
And that should be on a piece of paper.
The people that are voting.
If you're saying no, are you saying no because it's too high?
Yep. No, that's, that's the intent. That's the intent.
Because we, because we don't know. We have no direction to go.
You can, you can.
If they just say no.
You, you can ask. Is that me?
They're being more bullheaded than I am, if you do that.
No, I think, I think that the way to do it is put it on the ballot. And well, is it too high, is it too low? Is it schools?
Yeah, we're the seniors.
We all are. We, we all are.
I, I recall probably four or five years ago when it first came out, it's like when I think Russ, you and I. Cut 100,000 dollars out of the town road maintenance.
Yep.
That one year. And once you get behind the eight ball, you don't catch back up. And I think we're still chasing that today, four or five years later.
Yeah, well, we put a lot of money back in the bushes that year also.
We did, but we did, we did take, we took 100,000 dollars out there.
Right.
And, you know, 100,000 dollars in our small towns, a lot of money on the road maintenance.
Yep. It, it, it took us a while to get, we haven't pulled up yet, but we're catching.
How much could be put back?
Oh, we've got, we're back budget-wise to where we were.
We put it back.
But we're behind on the roads.
Halfway through the year, we put back.
Well, we put 50,000 and then we put it back, yeah.
Took us two years.
Okay, um, the. Regional School District Four meeting for people to put in their two cents about those meetings, there's a hearing on the third. And then the referendum on Tuesday, May 4th.
Right.
Who is the referent? Normal voting?
Normal voting.
Normal voting.
Normal voting for, on Tuesday, May 4th from noon to 8:00 PM, we'll be voting, it says in the community meeting room of the public library. Our normal voting spot for the, our core district budget. And the hearing is on the third.
All's good. Brian will be making a presentation tomorrow night.
Brian will be here tomorrow to make a presentation.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I think it's important, it's important that's super tough, very important, because that is major portion of the budget.
Schools are the driver of the budget, no question about it. But that's, that's all over the place. It's not unique to Deep River.
All right, folks, uh, say what happens if new business they would like to discuss. After that, uh, do I have a, uh?
Most of you adjourn.
Most of you adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Back to all in favor?
Aye.
All right, hold on.
Good job. Order at 7:32 or so. Thank you all for coming, all the folks that are here in attendance and all the folks that are coming, uh, via Zoom. We're here doing this meeting hybrid as a result of executive orders, I think 9H and, uh, and the subsequent extensions of that executive order. We are going to try and do this as close to normal as we can. We're going to start off with, um, with our Board of, Board of Education, Deep River Elementary School Board of Education presentation. We'll go directly to our, uh, town Board of Finance presentation, and then we'll go into questions and answers. Um, we will try to answer any questions in the audience first in the, in the, um.
We will try to answer any questions in the audience first, in the, in the, um, those in attendance first. And then we'll go to the Zoom, um, audience. Bear with us, please. We are not real familiar with doing this in a big group like this. So what we're going to ask people to do is if you have a question, send a chat to the Zoom. Joyce will do her best to keep those questions in order. If you want to send what that question is about, that's fine, but just, please just identify yourself and tell us that you have a question. Joyce will let us know the orders that they come and we'll call on you. At that point, please unmute yourself and ask your question. We will respond as accurately as we can. I think that's the, the crux of it. And if we come up with something else, we'll, we'll address it when we get to it. Yes, that's right. Anybody in the auditorium that has a question, please, you have to go to a microphone so that the Zoom can, uh, the Zoom attendees can hear what we're saying. And that said, I'm going to introduce Brian White, our Superintendent of Schools for Region Four.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian White and it's my pleasure to be here this evening just to walk everybody through a, a very brief presentation of the proposed Deep River Elementary School Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2122. Uh, this is essentially a presentation that we gave not too long ago to the Board of Finance here in town, but felt that this was a pretty good overview, uh, to share this evening for the benefit of the community. And so, uh, without further ado, uh, where we left off in our budgeting process on the Board of Ed side, uh, is a proposed 2122 budget of $5,659,731. This represents, this represents an increase of 3.58% or a change of $195,576 over current fiscal year. Not sure where I'm aiming this thing here. Next slide, please. It's going to be a very short presentation. Any questions? No problem. Excellent, thank you very much. And so, uh, this slide right here is just a, a pretty good at a glance view of exactly what the elementary budget looks like by object code. And as you can see, uh, when you look at the lighter shade of blue and the much larger darker blue, that, um, almost 80% of the budget is really salary and benefits of our employees at the elementary school. Uh, all of those other object codes, I, I realize it's probably difficult to read on the screen for those who are in the audience. That represents the rest of our spending. Next slide, please. And so in terms of major budget drivers, uh, we spent a lot of time this year on the Board of Education side, really looking very carefully at the budget. We spent a lot of time talking about zero-based budgeting and that was really a theme for us. That was something, when I came into the district last year, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about really starting with zero in each budget line and then building a budget that we felt represented, uh, the needs of the school in a way that's as fiscally responsible as possible. And so what you see in this year's budget, we believe, um, is a budget that's, represents the need of the school, but does so in a manner that also, um, allowed us to realize some efficiencies and cost savings in different areas of the budget. And so what you're left with is really contractual obligations. The most significant driver pushing the budget up this year is contractual obligations. And that's true of all of our different employee groups. Those are negotiated in some cases years in advance. They're contractual. And so we can anticipate year to year, a certain percentage increase, uh, in salary and benefits costs. Maintaining programs was another budgeting team for us. Uh, we've identified it as a cost driver, but in truth, um, we really worked very hard to maintain what we have. Uh, there's really no new spending initiatives represented in this year's elementary school budget. In terms of cost saving measures, if you were to really go through the document and do a line by line comparison over current year, uh, you would see that there are several areas that we found opportunities for cost savings. Um, and again, really bringing that discipline forward with zero-based budgeting, we felt, um, allowed us to achieve some savings throughout the budget. We do have a couple of new initiatives, uh, that are represented in the budget as presented. Um, one of the things we talked about in Deep River as we did with our other Board of Education budgets was the need to increase our substitute daily rate of pay. This proposal is to keep us competitive with surrounding communities. It's an area that we have not looked at for quite some time. And over time, we've fallen behind what other districts pay in our area. This is important because we have a very limited pool of people who substitute in our schools. And it's important that we continue to attract substitutes to ensure that there's limited disruption to our buildings in the event of absences. And then we also have, as proposed, a building study. So just a few words on the building study, really what this is all about is trying to understand the long range capital needs of our school. We have a similar proposal in all of our education budgets this year. And it's really part of a district-wide effort to understand, uh, current and long-term costs associated with our schools. Next slide, please. Yeah. That's fine. That, yep, no, that's great, thanks. So I'm, I'm not going to read every bullet on this slide. I mean, I, I think I sort of covered this in my remarks. What this slide really demonstrates is what this budget supports. And as I mentioned, it was very important for us to maintain what we have. Uh, there, there's very little new spending here, but, uh, we recognize that, uh, the programming that we currently offer at the middle school, excuse me, the elementary school prepares our students well for the middle school. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to spend any time on this slide this evening, um, but what I will say is that we spent a significant amount of time at the Board of Ed side when we develop our education budget, looking at enrollment trends and staffing levels. As you recall from the pie chart slide, 80% of our costs are driven by salary and benefits. And so that is the driver when it comes to education budgets. And we look very carefully at year-to-year enrollment trends to guide our efforts to make sure that we're adequately staffed. Uh, sometimes you're in a situation where you increase staff, but what we've seen in this region over the past several years has been a steady decline in enrollment in all three of our elementary schools. And so as that decline in student enrollment has occurred, uh, we have made incremental reductions over time in staffing, um, as appropriate. Next slide, please. Next. No problem. Are we, are we all set to go ahead? Did it go? Okay, and so really, uh, almost in summary here, and thank you for, uh, your attention. So what this slide shows, and this is probably the most important one, um, you can really get a sense of the year-to-year comparison of total educational expenditures for the community of Deep River. What this slide demonstrates is the cost of your K6 elementary school, the portion of the Region Four budget, and then that totals out in that bottom row. And so you can see when you combine the budget for the elementary school and the budget for Region Four, what the total educational expenditure is. As you can see, 2021, uh, 12,957,626 dollars is the current total educational spend. Next year, we're projected at 13,224,124. That represents an increase in total educational spending of 2.06% or a change of $266,498. And that's as currently proposed both for the regional budget as well as Deep River Elementary. We'll spend a little bit of time on this. I know that the Board of Finance has had the opportunity to also review these requests. Uh, these are our capital needs that are being requested from the Board of Education. The capital needs are provided for through the town budget, not the Board of Education budget. Uh, but this was something that we spent some time talking with the Board of Education about. Uh, some of these items have been requested for the past, in some cases, multiple years. Other requests are more recent. As you can see, the total requested budget for capital expenses is $60,156. And that was our budget timeline and next steps. And so that just concludes our presentation admittedly pretty general, but, uh, we felt that was a pretty good overview of the budget. And certainly if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Okay, thanks. Um, I think what we'll do is Bud, you'll come up through the Board of, um, Board of Finance, and then we'll, we'll go into questions all, all generally, uh, once we, once we get going.
Good evening, everyone. I am Bud Eckerhoff. As, um, as, uh, as Angus said, I have the honor of serving as the, uh, the chairman of the Deep River Board of Finance. We are here tonight to, uh, for an informational presentation on the proposed budget. Technically, we are here to talk about proposed expenditures, which would begin in July. Stated differently, we are here to talk about the services the town of Deep River will provide its citizens over the next year. While technically we're here to talk about expenditures, you'll find as we are going through this presentation, revenues. Now that's, it is fine. It's better to have audio.
Okay. I'm just going to talk for a little while and see if Luther tells me it's okay. So we're okay or no? Audio is fine?
I'm, can I speak on this one? This is, seems to be fine. All right. Leave, meeting canceled. Is that, uh, thing with us? I, I'm going to, I'm going to continue. I mean, I, I'd indicate that we are here technically to, uh, to look at the expenditures, although you'll find as we go through the budget, uh, that revenues are going to play a, a key part in, uh, the expenditures that we are proposing to you. In addition to that, uh, I am certain that there are people who are listening to us, who are very concerned about their individual obligations to provide revenues to support the expenditures. Many, most of us rely upon public services. Taxes are the way we pay for those public services we use. As a citizen, as a taxpayer, you have a right to understand how your taxes are determined and you have a right to participate in, uh, in how we set those, uh, those taxes. Uh, we have an obligation to provide equitable taxes in both the collection and in the services we provide to different constituents. Uh, we also have an obligation to, uh, provide those services as efficiently as possible, stated alternatively, at the lowest possible cost. Uh, I have been making this presentation for several years and I always like this picture. Uh, I just remind all of us that there are many who have been doing this long before we got here. And we are, we are standing on the shoulders of those who came before us. Uh, after we finish this evening, the Board of Finance will assemble, will listen to comments from citizens and assemble a final proposed, how about that for a catchy phrase? A final proposed budget, which will be presented at the annual town meeting on Monday, uh, May 17th at 7:30. At that meeting, we will take, all of us, the citizens, will take a vote. Do, is this the proper level of expenditures? Is this the proper level of services that are expected, uh, in the next year? All right. Uh, immediately after that meeting, assuming that there is a, an affirmative vote, the Board of Finance will meet to set the mill rate that is, uh, required to fund the approved expenditures. Uh, I give you a, a brief history of what we have done to get here. Uh, the Selectmen and the Board of Finance has been meeting since the first week of March, March, April. We have met at least once a week. Uh, and while I'm calling it a workshop, we meet every month, again, at least once during the month, throughout the year to look at the current budget and, uh, begin to anticipate futures. I think it is better characterized that our budget process is a continuous process. The reason this is important though is during this March-April timeframe, we asked every board, commission and department in the town to also prepare a budget. We invite them into our meetings to discuss, um, their future needs. Uh, and while it is always overused, it is very true. We are extremely fortunate in this town to have dedicated, uh, volunteers who, uh, man our various services. These folks come forward and tell us what they would like to do. Um, in the, in the, uh, in the words of the great philosopher Mick Jagger, you can't always get what you want. Uh, we as the Board of Finance are attempting to give them what they need. We have to say no to a lot of people. We can't fund everything. With that as a background, let me keep on going. Here's the Board of Finance, who are your hosts tonight. That, while I called myself Bud, that is me up there is George in the chairman's spot. You will see the rest of us listed in alphabetic order. You will see far on the right-hand side, uh, we have a term. We, from time to time, asked you to vote for us. Hopefully that gives us, gives you the assurance that we are, uh, we're reflective of the needs or the expectations of the town. Here is the first page, uh, of the presentation that you have before you take comfort. I'm not, we'll go, we'll look at it smaller. Uh, this is a key page. This is a summary page. We will come back to this page several times. Along the top, you will see columns, uh, unaudited actual. Uh, I will look at that because they are audited. Appropriated budget, which is the budget we are currently operating on, and the draft budget, which is the, why we are here tonight to talk about that. And the changes in the draft from the appropriate, and we give you about dollar amount and percentages. All right. Uh, this, this proposed budget is on the town website. Don't, uh, as you can see, let's start with a few, a fewer numbers, an abbreviated spot. Uh, let's focus on the appropriated budget we are currently operating on and the draft budget. Right? The appropriated budget was approved by the citizens of the town last May. It was adjusted several times during the year for, uh, large expenditures that were also approved at a town meeting. If you'll notice, there is a shortfall in the current appropriated budget of, I'm going to round, $210,000. That was done intentionally by the Board of Finance. When we began to assemble the budget we are currently on, working under, we started in March, April. The pandemic was happening all around us. The economy was closing down. We just did not know the economic conditions we would be in. Uh, we were resistant to passing on a large increase in taxes. Uh, and we didn't know the economic conditions that the citizens, town of Deep River, uh, is in. While we were resistant to passing on a large increase, you will notice that we did increase the mill rate by .57. We drew, to fund the remainder of that budget, we drew upon our town surplus. We had a fair, we had confidence at the time that we had accumulated a surplus of a little over $2 million. The number you see there is audited. It is about 2.68, but we were very close. We had comfort that we had savings. We had comfort that we had savings that could pick up the difference. So, I shall move on. Now, watch, I'm trying to make a point. I think I could make it differently, but work with me here. If you note, my red box is the change between the appropriated and the draft. I am stating here that the proposed revenues are, the revenues are greater than the proposed expenditures. However, they are still not adequate to attempt to address the shortfall in last year's budget. We decided not to pass on the full increase last year. We did not collect adequate revenues to cover our budget. We are still looking at a shortfall in the budget we're proposing to you tonight. So the budget before you tonight has a shortfall, $46,763. We will come back to that, obviously. Let me introduce you to another concern we have. Down there, is that in the left-hand corner, assessed valuation, net taxable grand list. That is the sum of all, the market value of all the property that is taxed in the town of Deep River. The appropriated budget, which is the one we are currently working on, you'll see that there is a value. And if you look at the draft budget, the one we are chatting about now, that reflects a revaluation. The state of Connecticut requires every town to have a revow every five years. Makes a lot of sense. Within towns, values can be relatively changed, can, different properties can have different values. So it is prudent that we change that valuation or keep it current. And town of Deep River should be very proud. Our property went up $22, $23 million. We should all take great pride in our property. But remember, that property forms the basis upon which we apply our property taxes. Due to the increase in property value, if we did not change our mill rate from the current 29.95, every taxpayer, if you work with me and say it is spread out across every taxpayer, every taxpayer would be required to pay about 4.47% more simply because of the increase in property. Therefore, when we began our budget process, we knew we were facing a budget shortfall. We had a great desire to reduce the mill rate to reflect the revaluation. Let's focus, as I said was the purpose of tonight, on our expenditures, which particularly focus on the increase in our expenditures, which to focus initially on the new fire truck. We have had a new fire truck in our budget for, I'm going to say, three years. I may be cutting it a bit short, but at least three years. Three years ago, the town approved a new fire truck. We received extremely strong encouragement, positive feedback that the town could qualify for a grant. We applied for that grant. And most of the grant year, we continued to get some positive feedback. And I do not remember May or June, at the end of the budget year, we found that, no, we were not selected. We attempted to put that fire truck in last year's budget. As we just chatted about, last year was full of economic uncertainty. We had a large mill increase we passed through. We pulled the fire truck out of that budget. It is back again. The fire truck we were chatting about has got to be, but 35 years old, something like that. It does no longer pass its OSHA. It has a cab that is open. It is just not a safe that we are using. So, let me offer to you that if you look at expenditures, you'll see our best estimate of $700,000. And it is a placeholder of seven. But if you look up in revenues, we intend to borrow the dollars to fund that expenditure. Angus and I have been talking with potential lenders. Each one of those, and we are attempting to reach some structure of what that borrowing will be. All of those potential lenders have given us comfort that we can structure that, we can structure that borrow so that the lender will make all necessary payments to the fire, whoever is constructing our new fire truck, will make all the payments along the way. And next July, we will enter into a debt, a long-term debt with that lender. And so the first payment on the debt to cover the fire truck will be in the next year's revenue. Now, I give you the following as a preliminary estimate of what I think that debt is that we will face in the next, next year. Current estimates from these potential lenders, about 3.5% to borrow for 15 years. We would have two payments on that debt. I estimate that to be about $30,000 twice a year or $60,000 obligation that would be with us in the next fiscal year. So, the new fire truck will be, I couldn't think of enough things to add here. A new fire truck will be bid, ordered, purchased, and financed in this fiscal year. The first debt repayment will be in the following fiscal year. Consequently, this truck will not impact this budget. Since it will not impact this budget, I am going to pull it out of our conversation about the change in our expenditures. This budget reflects 268 or 09 of increased expenditures. The largest portion is ordinary expenditures, and ordinary gives a pretty good indication of what we're talking about. The second line item called land, buildings, etc., is, most of you probably think of it as capital, those which have a life of greater than one year. It is declining. Therefore, let's talk about, I will explain to you what the change from the current appropriate year into next year is. All right. Submit it for your approval if some of you are Rod Sterling fans. Town of Deep River has three priorities in alphabetical order. Education, infrastructure, public safety, and my creative category of other. I am going to look at the increases and apply them to those three priorities. Education, now, Brian's presentation throws me off a tad, but we can catch up. Yes, the Deep River Elementary School came to the Board of Finance, asked for an increase of $195,000. The board said we will accept an increase of 105,561 is what we are proposing to you as an increase in the elementary school, bringing their total budget to $5.6 million. The town of Deep River recognizes that the building the elementary school is in is a town building. We accept the maintenance cost of those buildings, which we budget separately. For instance, we have been trying, we have successfully been replacing part of the roof every year. Last year, we did $40,000. This year, we have reduced it a bit to 25. Regional school district has, we are recognizing in our budget, an amount of 7767564, which is an increase of $70,922. That total increase in education represent about 69.5% of the increase in this year's expenditures. Look at infrastructure. The word infrastructure seems to be in play in today's world. I'm going to define it as that which our society is based on. Obviously, then, when you, the roads and bridges that help us get from place to place would be in here. Waste and recycling is the way we attempt to get rid of our waste. And I'm going to take a more, the more, the new definition. I'm going to suggest to you that we base our society on our healthcare. So I've included public nurses in here. Library, I'm including. The library we have in Deep River, during the budget process, I think we all learned just what a valuable gem that is and how they have provided services during this pandemic to lots of people. People turn to a library for, not the old-fashioned taking a book out. They learn, they go to recreation. They educate themselves. It is a massive task. There is a big movement of that library, and has been for some time, to begin to introduce young children into the learning and reading ability. So, I have put it in there. Park and Rec, hopefully you agree with that as an infrastructure. The 83, almost $84,000 to increase in the infrastructure is about a 31% increase. Public safety, hopefully this is a straightforward definition. Police, fire, communication for police and fire, public utilities, which keeps the lights on in our town and keeps water in our water mains. The total cost there is about $83,000, which represent 31% of the increase. I'm going to take those increases by those three priorities. And so there they are, all the increase. I am going to compare those increases to the portion of our budget, both appropriate and proposed. You will see that the increase in, the increases in education are about what education is in our budget. By education accepting their proportional share of our budget, that made some space so that we could begin to focus on infrastructure and public safety. Lots of stories, lots of history. We have, over time, been required to not fully fund our infrastructure needs, not fully fund our public service. We are catching up, but this gives us an opportunity to meet some of those needs that we have been putting off. And I've changed other to general town administration, which goes down, by the way. You'll see that the town, other services of the town have gone down. All right. Just to put where we are in perspective, here is a relationship between the town's portion of the budget and education. I've stated there that the education, about 70%. There's a temptation to start saying it is growing, but I think it is far too early to suggest that. If you look at total education expenditures, over the last five years, education expenditures have grown for the town of Deep River by $1.269 million. You add in this year, it goes up to 1.41 and a half. During that time period, a mill was worth about a half a million dollars. That suggests to you that education expenses have increased our mills by over two mills, maybe three mills. If you look at 2021, if you look at the increase in education, 576, when I said that we had to pass on large increases last year under the economic uncertainty, this was the driver of those increases. If you remember, we passed on half of them in the form of a mill rate and we took the other half out of our surplus. Now, how about this for a headline? I'm getting everyone excited. Interesting expenditures. It is hard to imagine that you might even find that title interesting. There are, there is parts, there are people who think of me as a fun person, who really don't think that I find expenditures exciting, but here we go. All right. Let's look at salaries and benefits, particularly compared to the school. The school is what, 80, 85% salaries? Look at our percentage, less than 10% of our budget. It goes to salaries and benefits. We have a union, they, we agreed to a 2.5% increase in that union, and they're paying. But we've kept the percent of our salaries low, our personnel type thing. I hint to you, the way to interpret this is most of our salaries go to providing services. All right. As we go through here, we will talk about, we'll bump into some salaries along the way. So, I have put up here, interesting expense items, Selectmen. I put it up here to tell you there's nothing interesting about the Selectmen budget. If you were to look at this without this guided tour, you'd look at the bottom and see Selectmen's budget is going up by 13%. In the prior administrative assistant has left the town's employment, going to school, that person worked 30 hours a week. The current administrative assistant, we are raising her hours to 35 like all other full-time employees. So what you see there is an increase in hours. The Selectmen assistant salary, the Selectmen's assistant salary was further down in the budget in prior years, in the communication budget line. And we all communicate, so why shouldn't it have been in the communication line? It is really an administrative position for the Selectmen. We have brought it up here since the person who had it has retired. It is time to change. I've highlighted for you, the municipal ethics commission had put a zero in there. They are attempting to identify what is needed to bring, to provide the services that that commission does. They are preparing an idea of what it is. They will probably bid out to ask someone to help them put together their, I'm not sure bylaws is the right one, but I hopefully, right phrase, but hopefully that, you're comfortable with it. We believe that we can handle those expenses out of our legal fees. But, so, nothing interesting about the Selectmen, other than they look bottom line like they're, they are interesting. This is another one that you may not find as interesting as I do. Two, three years ago, we applied for a loan, about $110, something like that, dollars, which we used to upgrade the heating system, air conditioning system in most town buildings, including the school. We put insulation, we did many things. And you can see that we're saving, we, the town, are saving about $10,000 a year. The school is also appreciating some of those savings. Electricity, the reason we have increased the electricity is, EverSource is asking for an increase and it seemed logical that that would flow to us as well. Restoring police, this is an interesting subject. Depending upon how far back you wish to go in this conversation, let's go five years back. We had a full-time constable and three part-time constables. The full-time constable retired with the input from the resident trooper. They said we could handle it with two, two part-time constables. And, and we did, we did. However, the current resident trooper is suggesting to us that Deep River is not immune to some of the social issues that are going on in the world. And as those issues come into Deep River, it would be much more efficient if we could have a full-time officer, that we could focus on some of those issues. Consequently, we are moving one of the full-time officers to a, excuse me, one of the part-time officers to a full-time officer. The waste recycling, again, hopefully you're getting a kick out of, I'm calling this interesting. If you look at Myra, the materials, innovation, recycling authority there, you'll see that is, they have increased our cost by, we estimate, but this is the magnitude of the increase they're passing on, we estimate that we will experience about a 16% increase in that. That authority in Hartford has a facility that used to, you, use the trash to generate electricity that is closing down. The state of Connecticut is currently shipping the trash to Ohio and Pennsylvania. I just leave that phrase there, you figure out how you want to handle it. Bulky waste is going up by 15%. Hazardous waste is going up by 12%. A lot of pressure on waste. It is not isolated to Deep River. Everyone is dealing with this issue. The Selectmen have recently set up a potential study committee. I suggest that you will, you'll be hearing more about this. Library, we've touched upon the library. They have asked, they asked for several years, but they have asked again to take one of their part-time employees who has generated this children's program that is getting all kinds of raves, the same person that was a part-time, the school is asking them to run some programs. They do a lot with the students, the kids during the summertime. They have asked to move that person to a title of assistant library. This was a difficult decision for the Board of Finance, but we decided that we're very proud of that as we learn more of it, very proud of that library there, very innovative. They were, made a major contribution to many of our citizens during the pandemic. So, that is a wise decision. This is good, as they said. Look at Tri-Town Youth. Tri-Town Youth by its name is an organization that provides family and mental services to at-risk kids and families, to the three towns. The town of Deep River has been providing that organization with offices for as long as I can remember, and $6,000. There has been some questions raised by Chester and Essex, whether we are properly carrying our share. There was a request by the Selectmen to come up with a formula for Tri-Town, to come up with a formula. They have come up with a formula that is a per capita formula. And the town has, has been assessed an additional $14,000, in addition to the dollars in which we sort of provide them for office space. Listening to this group, it is, it is heartwarming. I could do better if I had time to think about a better word. They have worked with at-risk kids and their families. They have worked with at-risk kids and their families. Both the library and the Tri-Town services and the school have told us stories about when kids are not in school, this disorientation that provides to you. And this is one of the organizations we're trying to fund to address those needs. And interesting expenditures, capital. Notice I've changed the name to expenditure. Fairly traditional here, the fire department, firehouses need to be maintained. That second line, the fire department needs air bottles when they go into various conditions, to have oxygen. We have been trying to replace a number of those bottles every year. We have, in addition to that replacing of bottles, we are attempting to deal with that which puts air into the bottles, which is why that number is large. I drop your eye down to architectural engineering for the firehouse. The town of Deep River has been talking about firehouses for, this has got to be a big number. Just drop a big number in there. We expect, we have been working, we have an architect, which we have been paying. We have been working with the fire department. You should hear more about the result of that work soon, right? If you look at that number, the nine eighty-four is a bottom line. If you take the fire truck of seven hundred out of there, you will see that the, the capital expenditures have declined this year. All right, interesting revenue items. Look at all other town revenues. You will see that all other town revenues have increased by a hundred and forty-two point five thousand dollars. However, I wish to bring notice to you that much of that number is driven by the surplus of Regional Four of a hundred and sixty-nine. Two years ago, about two years ago, because of the pandemic and the lack of activities and your restriction on activities, Regional Four had a surplus which they required to give back to the town. We are going to use that surplus, that one-time surplus, to fund next year's expenditures. That surplus will not be with us the following year. I find that an extremely sobering thought, but it is what we're using to fund our expenditures this year. All right, look at state and federal grants. You will see that they are declining. There's lots of stories right now between the appropriated draft, why they are declining. However, I wish to point out to you the dependence we have on these revenues. We depend, and this math gets a little vague, but over ten, eleven percent of the revenues we have coming in to fund our, our activities are coming from the state. The state of Connecticut is under a great deal of financial stress. I have put my little at-risk at the bottom with a question mark. I don't know, no one knows what the reduction in support that the state will give us in the future. There was recently a meeting of the finance committee that voted out an attempt to reduce or restructure the educational support. Out of that report, Deep River will lose about four thousand dollars. So that number is in, is in play for us. It is, and we are heavily dependent on that. So anyhow, let me now turn to tax relief. The state of Connecticut, many years ago, said that all towns are required to give tax relief to certain elderly with certain income conditions. We do that. In addition to that, the town of Deep River has a tax minimization for elderly with certain income condition. We estimate that that will be a forty-seven thousand dollar reduction in our revenue. A tax exemption for Deep River ambulance, Deep River Fire Department. I'm not sure where to begin this conversation. The state, years ago, encouraged towns to provide tax relief to firemen and ambulance to encourage their participation. They recently passed, I don't know, passed or encouraged that, to increase that number, to give fire department about fifty members of the fire department who meet certain annual standards, a tax relief of up to fifteen hundred dollars. The town of Deep River has been providing a tax exemption of five hundred dollars for many, many years. We are falling behind our surrounding towns. It is our recommendation that we increase that tax exemption from five hundred to a thousand dollars. Now, the numbers up there will throw you off. The exemptions, the sum of the exemptions we gave in the current budget in July was about ten thousand. So I creatively doubled ten thousand and put twenty thousand in here to cover the thousand dollars. That brings us back to our current proposed budget shortfall, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. We have three ways to address that shortfall. Find additional expenditure cuts, increase the mill rate, or draw, once again, draw upon our general fund surplus. The Board of Finance met last night. Board of Finance, when asked, what can I tell the town? Is there expectations on how we will fund that shortfall? The majority of Board of Finance leaned towards, hopefully I'm picking up vague words, but leaned towards that we would fund the surplus, excuse me, we'd fund the shortfall by once again drawing upon our surplus. And we would reduce our current mill rate of two nine point nine nine. We would reduce that to twenty-nine-five, a mill rate reduction of point four nine. That is the current thinking of the majority of the Board of Finance. Hopefully you can tell from those phrases that it is still in play, and there's others that may have a slight different leaning. So it is time for you to ask questions, to make comments, to express your concerns. Angus has shared already that there is a microphone. If you have questions, come on up. We wish to have people Zoom, see who you are. All right, Angus, it is you, or me, whatever you wish to, us.
So, that's, gives me a little bit of room. Why don't we try, as we expressed earlier, to give the folks that are here in the auditorium an opportunity to ask any questions, to make any comments? And once, once we're finished here, we will go, move on to the, to the folks that are attending via Zoom. I, I don't have a computer in front of me, so I don't know how many folks there are, but, okay. If, if you are attending via Zoom, I think now, if you have not already, is a good time to send a chat message to Joyce so that she can, can put you in the queue. So that said, and first of all, thank you, Brian, for your presentation, and Bud, thank you for, as always, a very entertaining presentation of a very dry subject. So that said, is there anyone in the, in the audience that has any questions or comments? Please come on up to the microphone and identify yourselves, and same thing with Zoom people. Before you speak, please identify yourself.
Algarret, question to the Board of Finance, actually two parts of a question. You want to take money from the general fund, or I'm sorry, the unappropriated general fund and use that to pay for the deficit? The state recommends how much of a percentage of the budget is in unappropriated general fund?
Yes, yes, the current leanings of the Board of Finance, majority of the current leading, wish to fund the shortfall with a drawl upon the surplus. The, let's see, our auditors suggest, the audit standard is for towns to have approximately fifteen percent of their expenditures as a surplus. We have always felt a tad uncomfortable, that magnitude, and have targeted eleven. And with the fund, what I think is funding for this year, and if we take out next year, we will be closer to ten percent.
You'll end up at ten percent.
A little bit, a little bit higher than ten percent, but yes.
That's the minimum recommendation?
That is less than the minimum recommendation, that's correct.
Okay, that's probably, in my opinion, that's not a great idea. And second question is, why are we still paying for Southern Connecticut Gas Company pipes in our town?
The, I can't get a date on that, do you want to take it?
I can, well.
Don't go for it, go for it.
The reason that we're paying for that is when Southern Connecticut Gas agreed to come, or wanted to come through town, the town agreed to have them come through town. But in order, in order for the, for them to come through, the town had to provide some funds.
Correct.
The cost of that was stretched out over five years when we initially made the agreement. That was not going to work, it was not going to be a cash neutral. We were going to end up paying by the end of that. We made another agreement subsequent to that, so that we stretched out over ten years, and we are going to be, while we pay them twenty-five thousand a year, we receive twenty-five thousand, at least twenty-five thousand in taxes, because they pay taxes on the pipes that come through here. So that is a wash, but we, it is part of our expenditures and will always be a part of our revenue as well.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here? Come on.
Hi, I'm Dan Morrissey. We, we saw that we're going to see a decrease in the mill rate of about half a mill. I cannot recall the history of the mill rate in Deep River. Do you mind giving us some background, what the mill rate increase has been in the last, say, five years?
Well, I could run down to my office and give you exactly what that is, if you want to do that. I, pardon? Yeah, it was, it was, last year we went up point five seven. The year before that, we were flat. The year before that, we went up, and the year before that, we went up. I don't know the numbers on that, but we've gone up, I would suggest in the last four years, we've gone up a mill and a half.
A mill and a half of thirty.
Yep.
So our mill rate has increased much below the rate of inflation, much below the rate of the cost of living increases in social security, much below the contractual increases in salaries for all of our staff in town. I don't see how that's sustainable, and I'm just wondering, all of these are predictable things. We know contractually what salary increases are going to be years ahead of time. We have projections for school enrollment years ahead of time. How can we justify having a flat mill rate when we know expenses are going up? It seems to me, eventually, we're going to get caught out. We're going to have a big problem, we're going to have a big shortfall. We already have a small, in relation to our operating budget, we have a small reserve. What's our plan for addressing this?
I think I get your question, or your comment, and, and your question. I don't, I don't know the rate of inflation, I don't know those off the top of my head. I'm sure you've looked at that before you made your comment, and I appreciate that. What I think, my response to that is, we have increased our mill rate when we needed to, to continue to provide the services. As Bud indicated during his presentation, at certain times, even while we were increasing our mill rate, we were cutting services. We have got to balance the needs of the services that we provide with the ability of our citizens to continue to pay the taxes. This, this community is a very diverse community. We have folks here, who, we have many folks in our population, and I hear from mostly this time of year, but all through the year, about the difficulty in continuing to live on a fixed income when tax rates and other costs continue to go up. We've also got an increase in population of very wealthy people. We've got to balance the services that we can provide with the ability of our town to pay the taxes. We have done a lot of work to try and ensure that we do not get hit with a tax increase like what happened twenty years ago when we were flat for zero, we were flat for ten years straight. We got hit with a whopper after that, but that was not just because the taxes were flat. That was also because we got hit with a huge expense at the elementary school repairs. We have, there, there were a lot of drivers besides just the fact that we held our mill rate flat. We are, we, and I say we, I mean, all of the people up here, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen are working as hard as we can to keep our taxes moving in the direction that they have to go to stay in balance with costs, at the same time allowing for people to afford to be able to continue to live here. Bud, you can.
I, I understand that. That's one of the reasons I mentioned the increase in the, the cost of living increase in social security. People who are on a fixed income, they, you know, they eat on that cost of living increase. I understand that. I think it would be prudent for the town in the future to maybe target that social security cost of living increase as our percentage increase for our mill rate. Having a target of zero causes us to cut budget items that result in, or loss of services. It also cuts things like capital needs assessments on town facilities. Without those assessments, we can't project forward, and we end up in situations where we have unpredictable emergency expenses that are unavoidable. I moved to town around the time of that giant mill rate increase. So I, I, I don't want to experience that again. We have a lot of predictable things. We can invest a small amount of money to get a better handle on predicting these other expenses. And I just, I would like to see the town set a precedent for our target mill rate increase to match some of these other well-known, easily accessible indices that will allow us to gradually increase costs instead of having something like you referenced twenty years ago.
I just want to make.
I want to be very, very clear when we say.
Sorry, Angus, I just want to make one comment. Because you got to, you have to take into consideration this year, it is a revale year, right? So the grand list is increased by four and a half percent approximately. So for the people that are homeowners and property owners in town, if we've left the mill rate unchanged, you would receive a four and a half percent higher tax bill this year.
I, I understand that, and also I want to say one thing. I don't want to come across as too aggressive. I understand that all of you have put a huge amount of time and work into this, and while I may not agree with the outcome you've achieved, I really do truly appreciate your efforts and, and the time you've put into this.
A zero, a zero increase in terms of the tax bill that you would receive as a property owner in town would be a one-point-two mill cut, which is not what we did.
Right.
Okay, so we kind of came in, in between for the proposal, but that's, that's where we landed, you know, in terms of equity issue. Actually, if you're a car owner, you're probably going to get a lesser bill because the mill rate's been cut, right? And it's going to be driven by the blue book value. But in terms of the, the revenue that comes from the people that own the real estate in town, that's where all the tax money comes from. If, if we just left it alone, it'd be, you know, heading on a five percent bigger tax bill for you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak or comment? Okay, let's go to Zoom. Mark Lewis is here. Mark, if you will unmute yourself and, for you to speak.
Can you hear me? Up, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, excellent. First of all, Angus, the, the inflation rate for twenty twenty was about one-point-two percent. Twenty nineteen is about one-point-eight percent, just for an FYI. If you need more information, I can stop by your office and work over those numbers with you. I, I'm a resident of the town, of course, but at the same time, I have two kids that are in the Deep River Elementary School system, eight and ten years old. After looking at the budget for the education, I was a bit entertained with Luther's presentation, but at the same time, I was troubled with the fact that some of the comparisons that were put forth in that presentation were a bit, a bit inaccurate. And I will say they were inaccurate in the sense that you can't use percentages and, and then you can't use absolute numbers at the same time and expect anyone to draw any type of useful conclusion. So what I'm going to say is that, in looking at the budget, it looks like the Deep River Elementary budget was about seventy-one percent appropriated across all the numbers for twenty nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one, which is an indication of good, good management of expenditures. But it's still there, the ninety thousand dollar shortfall in that budget that I hope, over time, before the budget is voted upon, that we can come to some type of resolution to close that gap. My question for Luther also is that the seven-hundred thousand dollar line item that's in the budget for the fire truck, when will that fire truck be put into commission?
Well, the fire truck is still. Well, the fire truck is still in design. We will bid it out, the winner of the bid, lowest bid, I assume that is what we'll go with, we will enter into a contract to construct the fire truck. We will make payments along the way and enter into a note. We do, I can't specifically answer when that truck will be done. Our expectations is later in this fiscal year, it will be put into commission. I think that, that, and just all based on hypotheticals, but I think I can't be more than a month or two off on that suggestion.
Okay, so if, if it's going to be put into commission, again, I, I don't understand what the line item's there only because it is going to be funded through, you know, financing. But secondly, whenever you replace a large asset, there is a significant reduction in your maintenance costs. And what I saw in the budget, I reviewed the budget prior to the call that you have posted on the website, and it looks like there's actually an increase in maintenance costs for vehicles. There, there should be some type of consideration as far as a reduction for the maintenance costs. If you were to buy a new fire truck that, where we're replacing one that's over 35 years old, there should be a reduction in that line item. That reduction, that line item right there alone can, can supplement some of the differences that the Board of Education is looking for as far as the increase in their expenditures from last year's budget.
You are correct that if you replace an old truck with a new truck, there should be a reduction. But the calendar that we just laid out for you has that new truck arriving very late in the year. Consequently, the maintenance numbers there reflect basically the same trucks that are currently in place. Hopefully we will see that in the following year.
And I would like to add to that, that, that is not the only truck that is old.
That's right.
Our fleet is aging. We have not, we have noticed significant increases in the cost of maintenance. And this is based on, on the, the fire department's recommendation of what the costs are going to be. And I think we actually reduced it a little bit from what that was. So thank you for that, but I think.
And I will, I will, okay. And I will entertain that now after this, so I'll leave it alone. The, the shortfall in the budget's 40, approximately $46,000 plus or minus. And, and that, that number is, is, in, in the scheme of things, that number is insignificant. It's less than 3%. It, it should come out of the general fund, but as the gentleman before me spoke, he talked about the mill rate, I mean, the increase in the rate is because what, I mean, property values are up now, but that's through no fault of our own. But again, we are going to eventually have to play catch-up when the real estate market corrects itself to some realization that these property values that we're looking at now are inflated only because of supply and demand. So I think there, there needs to be some active management in actually putting together true and hard projections on our revenues versus our expenditures over the next three to five years in order for us to more adequately and accurately estimate what our expenditures are in the future. Again, I, again, looking at the website, I see that there are two positions on the finance committee that are open in this year in 1121 that are up for bid. And, and I'm going to tell you this much, I am going to advocate to, to get on this board because I think there needs to be a little bit more work in projecting out for some of these revenues and expenditures because it, it doesn't appear to be happening. What we're doing is we're being reactionary and I think as a town, we need to be more proactive in our solutions. So with that, I will end it. I appreciate again everyone's hard work as a, as a member of the town and I appreciate everyone's contributions to put into together the budget tonight. Thank you.
No one else has got any questions from the, from the Zoom audience? And no one else has any comments from the, from the audience here? Then I would suggest that our meeting is close to concluding. Bud, do you have any, any final statements? I'm not, I can't even remember. It's been so long since we've been in public. Do we need a motion to adjourn? I think, I think we do. So if I could have a motion to, I'll give one last call for any comments.
We remind everyone, we're going to return on the 17th.
Yes, yeah. No one?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, let's see, a little bit of business before we go into that. We will, we will be back in this building on May 17th, the third Monday of May is our annual town meeting. That town meeting will be held here, but also remotely. We are working diligently to ensure that we can, we can safely and securely account for voting both remotely and in person. That's, I think that's, that's that. We're going to adjourn, no, we're going to end this meeting and we'll, we'll come back to, to meet again and speak quickly about the, the budget and then we will vote. And given that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you all for attending. Thank you for your patience with our work on our Zoom and we'll do, we'll do our best to do a little bit better next time.